There was a seven, I think it was seven and a half, eight feet, something like that. Yeah, we found it up on the wall. Yeah, it's pretty good. Go ahead. All right, nice evening. What'd you have for lunch?
What's that?
I said, what'd you have for lunch? You seemed so happy.
Yeah, I was just having fun. I literally took it out.
Oh, great, thank you.
In the chair. I asked him, he goes, "Sure, he goes, "three hours for about five minutes." He goes, "Okay, that means I was really asleep then, that's good."
Is that it? Hold on, it was...
I got down to start earlier, I had a lunch meeting.
No, hold on, I'm on the wrong tab.
So we moved that up with David, so we moved that up thirty minutes. So I had an hour and a half until they do nothing.
Legislative session? So that was gonna be part of it?
I brought my lunch. So.
Oh, okay. I have the letter, though, that you guys have to vote on, to be able to say, to the Governor DeSantis.
Oh. Yeah.
The Jeff to candidate Jimmy.
I got you.
He literally just handed to me, says if they vote on it, then this is what they sign. Okay, so it'll be another meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. Something else where your signature, can I ask you about it? You're gonna wait till at the end. This was done at a board meeting in March, March twenty-second, and it was to change the requirements for zoning on this. One, two, three, four, four.
It'll be to do this.
We're ready.
Okay.
Ready?
I now call back to order the Pasco County Commissioners' Meeting of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. First agenda item I will address will be AP ninety-nine. It was an addendum to the agenda today, and we're gonna look for a continuance. Denise?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. That item, did you say it was P ninety-nine?
AP ninety-nine?
AP ninety-nine, okay. It's PDD twenty-two zero-two-three-three. The item comes to you with a request to continue the item to the May third, twenty twenty-two Board of County Commissioners' Meeting at one-thirty in Dade City.
Move to continue. I'm sorry.
And do we have a proof of publication?
Yes, item P ninety-nine was published in Tampa Bay Times on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Continuance date is May third, twenty twenty-two, Board of County Commissioners' Meeting at one-thirty in Dade City. That's for the first reading.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
And now we'll proceed with public hearings with item, uh, public hearings starting with the ordinances, P fifty-four. And when was, we approve?
Yes, item P fifty-four was published in Tampa Bay Times on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Patrick Dutter, Planning and Development Department. So I have before you today, potentially, there we go, some landscaping code updates. So there is a team put together roughly two years ago to take a look at our landscaping and buffering section of our code. So the team was a combination of internal and external stakeholders. So from county staff, we had Frank Galdo Junior and Catherine Harper from the Cooperative Extensions Office. We had Elizabeth Blair from the County Attorney's Office, Mike Woodard, who is an arborist working in central permitting, and myself, and Pam Shaw, who are planners working for Planning and Development. And then we also did this in coordination with members of the Tampa Bay Builders Association. So Hannah McLeir from Clarview Land Design and Bridger Demers from Level Up Consulting. So we worked over the last two years to tweak the landscape code a little bit, to make it a little bit more friendly, improve some things that we needed to improve over time. So I'll just first want to acknowledge that while I see Catherine Starkey is not here, I have met with her and she was excited for these changes, so. Not important to mention that. So just to start on some of the updates and improvements, I'm gonna go ahead and read through this list relatively fast. If there's something in here that you want me to speak on specifically, feel free to stop me and I can talk about it. So some of the improvements included allowing for tree sample surveys, updated the intent and purpose of our landscaping and buffering section of the code. We updated the invasive species references. We added language for the right tree in the right place, clarified and made it easier to use existing vegetation for buffers, defined what a shade tree was, defined ornamental trees, clarified the use of palm trees, updated the ground cover planting requirements, added language about the proper maintenance of trees, added language about keeping future planting areas free of debris, added requirements of one shade tree in the front yard of single-family homes. We incorporated code section nine oh five point three, which is residential street trees, into nine oh five point two. We updated and clarified the vehicle use area requirements. We require landscape islands to go from eight feet wide to ten feet wide. Added requirements for larger vehicles for vehicle use areas, clarified planting adjacent to building perimeter lands, building perimeters, allowed for existing vegetation to qualify for buffers without alternative standard applications. We revamped the buffer requirement table, revamped the buffer and screening requirements table, adjusted the vehicle dealership buffer, added standards for ponds adjacent to rights of way, and then we added a buffer graphic to the development review manual, added the tree list to the development review manual, added the quick-use calculation templates to the development review manual, added some helpful links to the development review manual, and there are some other minor fixes and tweaks that came along with that. And then this is just an example of what some of those items that we're adding to the development review manual are. So you'll see we'll have a pictorial reference about what the buffers are supposed to look like. We have a tree list that was fully vetted by our arborists and our landscape experts. And then, of course, those are the calculations for development. So, any questions on any of that?
Any input? It's the first reading?
No.
Does this still have a tree in the front yard and one in the backyard? Because I didn't see the, hear the one in the backyard.
I, it depends, depends on the size of the lot. So depending on the size of the lot, you're required to have one tree per lot. And that tree is required to be planted in the front of the lot.
I thought there were two trees that were supposed to be planted.
So I think if it's less, if your lot is less than six thousand square feet, you only, you're only required to have one tree on your lot. And then we're saying that, you know, in some instances, those trees need to be planted in the front.
Do you know what is six thousand square feet in acreage?
I don't know that specifically. Six thousand divided by four, three, five, six, I don't know that off the top of my head.
An eighth, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Did you take public comment?
No one has signed up for item P fifty-four, and no one is on WebEx.
Okay. Anyone in the public like to comment on the item? Okay, this is the first reading, so we'll carry to the next one, no actions required.
Thank you.
Okay, item P fifty-five, thank you.
Item P fifty-five was published in the Tampa Bay Times on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
So item P fifty-five, Mr. Chair, we will be hearing that together with item P sixty-one.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to P fifty-six.
Item P fifty-six was published in Tampa Bay Times on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
So item P fifty-six is PDD twenty-two zero-two-two-four. Today is the adoption hearing, so we're asking you to approve this, find, approve it by roll call vote. It went to the local planning agency on March seventeen, twenty twenty-two, who found it consistent with a comprehensive plan and recommended approval to the board. It is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two-dash-fifteen and sheet fourteen, from rez three, residential three dwelling units per gross acres to rez twelve, residential twelve dwelling units per gross acre on approximately twenty-seven point four-five acres of real property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of State Route fifty-two and Old Pasco Road, providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. So if you take public comment, and again, this is adoption and it's by roll call vote.
Okay, any comments for staff? All right, anyone, is anyone in the public?
There's no one signed up for item P fifty-six and no one on WebEx.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this item?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Excuse. Okay, now we go to our public hearings. And Mr. County Attorney, will you read the, review the procedures for rezonings?
There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's land development code for rezoning.
Thank you. Those who are in person and have pre-registered to speak to any of the items on the public hearing agenda will be sworn in by the clerk now.
If you, if you're here to speak on any of the items, please stand to be sworn in and raise your right hands. Anyone else? Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Today, we have three public hearing items on the consent agenda. We'll start with P fifty-seven, a continuance.
Item P fifty-seven was published in the Tampa Bay Times on January fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, P fifty-seven, P fifty-seven is PDD twenty-two zero-zero-two-zero. This is a continuance request to the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two BCC meeting at one-thirty in Newport Ritchie.
Move to continue.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, P fifty-eight?
Item P fifty-eight was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February second, twenty twenty-two.
P fifty-eight is PDD twenty-two zero-zero-six-eight. Today is the transmittal hearing for this item, so we're asking that you take public comment and that you recommend or authorize transmittal to the FDEO and other reviewing agencies. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL twenty-one twenty-four, Denton Avenue, providing for transmittal of the proposed large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, two-dash-fifteen and sheet four, changing from IL industrial light, rez six, residential six dwelling units per gross acre, and rez three, residential three dwelling units per gross acre, to PD plan development and approximately three thirty-one point three-four acres of real property located at the southwest corner of Denton Avenue and Mattis Road, and a text amendment creating subarea policy, FLU seven point one point six one Denton Avenue, and a map amendment to the future land use map, two-dash-nine, adding subarea, map two-dash-nine, Perrin sixty-one Denton Avenue. This went to the local planning agency on February seventeen, twenty twenty-two, who found it consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Again, please take public comment today and authorize transmittal to the DEO and other reviewing agencies.
Okay, is anyone here to speak in opposition to the project?
And no one has signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay, seeing no one, leave it on consent. P fifty-nine?
Item P fifty-nine was published in Tampa Bay Times on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and March sixth, twenty twenty-two.
P fifty-nine is PDD twenty-two seven-six-zero-two. It's a zoning amendment, One Lakouchi Center, Inc., WREC Property, EDC Project. It's for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district, R-three medium-density residential district, R-four high-density residential district, MF-one multiple-family medium-density district, and C-one neighborhood commercial district to an I-one light industrial park district. This comes to you with a recommendation from the planning and develop, of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission, who heard the item on March seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
Is anyone in the audience or on WebEx in opposed to this item as well?
No one has signed up for this item and no one owns WebEx for this item.
Okay, we'll leave that on consent?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign? Okay, motion passes. Now we'll proceed with the remainder of the regular public hearings, items starting with P sixty.
Item P sixty was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, excuse me, good afternoon, Commissioners, is called Public Works. This is item PW twenty-two dash zero zero three-six, Wintry Boulevard, P-VAS number three four five five. This is one count maintained paved road. The approximated estimated project cost is about six hundred and nine five thousand dollars. Maximum cost per ERU is eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. The discounted amount is eighty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents. And the maximum cost per ERU after the discount is six thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Possible three hundred and thirty-eight votes, six to four percent, or two hundred and sixteen responded to the petition. Of that, one hundred and forty-five, or sixty-seven percent voted in favor of the project, seventy-one, or thirty-three percent voted against the project. The repayment is over a ten-year period and the interest rate is at three point two-five percent. This is a location map, an example of the road, board, ah, sorry, staff is recommending approval.
Okay, any comments for staff? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
There's no one signed up for this item and no one on WebEx.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, it's roll call vote?
No, this isn't. This is not.
All right.
You're good.
All right, all opposed? Item passes.
Fifty-five will be roll call, won't it? Yeah.
P sixty-one?
Item?
Yeah, you, we need to pull fifty-five first to be heard.
All right, so we're gonna hit P fifty-five and P sixty-one. And Mr. County Attorney, would you explain what the rules are with the consolidated?
So, so my recommendation has always been on, on, when you can do a consolidated presentation for both the comp plan and the rezoning, and then hold separate public hearings with separate votes, one for the reason, one for the comprehensive plan, one for the, one for the zoning. Otherwise, you, the public is going to have to identify which item they're speaking to. And it becomes confusing. But if staff and the applicant want to do a package presentation for both of them, that's, that's fine.
Which will save the time for back and forth.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, would you like for me to give the publication of both the items now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Item P fifty-five was published in the Tampa Bay Times on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and item P sixty-one was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Close yours.
So do we want to do the PowerPoint for P fifty-five and for P sixty-one? Or I could just do P sixty-one because some of it's already merged into there?
If you've got them, if you've got them separated, I would do one for fifty-five and then, then do your sixty-one.
Mr. Chair, and then also, there'll be two votes.
Yes.
Two motions, two votes.
Yeah, two motions, two votes.
Fifty-five will be roll call. Right.
Okay, so, P fifty-five is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPAL twenty-sixteen Newport Corners. So this is the adoption hearing for the proposed comprehensive plan text amendment. So I'll read the ordinance into record. An ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a text amendment to the future land use element appendix, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, a map amendment to the future land use map, two-dash-nine, amending subarea map, two-dash-nine twenty-five Newport Corners, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. So the proposal for the future land use amendment is amending the Newport Corners' future land use classification, as well as the accompanying future land use subarea map, two-dash-nine twenty-five. It is located north and south of Decubulus Drive, north of Plath Road, along the Little Road corridor. And the resolution to this, the applicant's proposal is to amend the FLU map, two-dash-nine twenty-five, and provide for a text amendment to FLU appendix A-six. There is a proposed accompanying MPUD that you will hear after this. These are the following policies that the proposed amendment are consistent with. And then just a little history, so December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, the local planning agency held a public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan text amendment, and unanimously approved to the Board of County Commissioners. The proposed amendment at that time increased the residential density by three units from thirty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-seven to three thousand four hundred dwelling units. It also reduced the non-residential entitlements from four point eight million square feet of retail office and support commercial uses to one point four square feet. And then we also established three village categories, being the Northeast Village, Village Center, and Neighborhood Village. There's also a connectivity plan that's utilized at this point in time as a conceptual planning tool. On January twenty-fifth, the Board of County Commissioners authorized transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity and other reviewing agencies. And as of March twenty-fifth, we did receive a letter of completion of their review and have deemed no issues or concerns from the state agencies. So here's a location map, identifying the location of the property, which is within the Central and Spring districts of the West Market area. This is the Boundary and Aerial, which is located along the Little Road corridor, just south of Decubulus and north of Plath Road. Here is your existing future land use classification. This is your existing village subarea map, which shows the village core, village general, parks and open space, neighborhood general, and employment mix areas. The applicant is proposing to amend this map to allow for the village center, core, parks and open space, neighborhood general area, and neighborhood village. This is the proposed connectivity plan that is going to act as a conceptual planning tool, and it identifies the roadway segments, mixture of uses, parks, open spaces, and amenities within this area. And with that, we recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the proposed amendment and adopt by roll call vote.
Okay, any comments for this part?
For the comp plan side.
Okay, so let's go right to the next one.
Okay.
P sixty-one.
Mr. Chairman, if staff has them separated, I, I would just go ahead and do them as separate presentations, so that, so that you keep your comp plan and your, and your rezoning separate.
Okay.
Unless there's some reason that the zoning needs to explain the comp plan.
Okay, let's, let's do that then, okay. So the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA, one oh nine North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn. I'll keep this very brief as to the comp plan, because I really think the residents that we have here are more concerned about the MPUD. The sites located in the West Market area and the urban service area, the board created the Newport Corners' project name and all of the subarea policies in two thousand and ten. All we're doing really today is really just two major things. We're reducing the amount of retail primarily. Previously, the project allowed for one point four million square feet of retail, and it located, or allowed for its location up next to neighborhoods, particularly on the west side. We didn't think that was a good form of planning, and we thought the scale of the non-residential uses was far too great. And it was really intended more for regional serving uses rather than neighborhood scale. And so the plan amendments are simply to downsize some of the non-residential units and make sure that they work better with our neighbors. I'll be happy to discuss anything about that, but I'll save most of my comments for the MPUD presentation.
Any comments, Mr. Harvey? Okay, as far as public comment goes, do you have anyone signed up?
We do, we have a few people who signed up.
Let's read them off.
Okay, we have Laura Jesky. Come on up to the podium. This was blank, I kind of forgot that.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I, again, maybe explain it a difference between fifty-five and sixty-one, because I think there might be some confusion amongst the audience, what they're speaking on, I just want to help you guys out, so.
Yeah.
So before you...
For purposes of the public, this is the, this is the big-picture comprehensive plan hearing. The next hearing that will be called up will be the detailed MPUD hearing.
Right, and I signed up for P fifty-five by mistake.
You can switch it.
I'd like to do, address P sixty-one.
We'll call you back up for that.
Thank you.
So I have one, two, three others that signed up specifically for P fifty-five, which may, may have wanted to speak on P sixty-one instead. And then I have three that signed up with a blank item, but they did identify Plath Road Development for Corners on the reason. So I can list their names out and see if they want to speak now, if you'd like.
Let's, let's see if they want to speak now.
Mark Jesky? Okay.
No worries, that's not a mistake.
For the record, Mr. Jesky wants to speak on P sixty-one. Then we have Julie, is it Bartunick?
Yes.
Okay.
I've heard to... Speak on both today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I speak on behalf of the Sierra Club Pasco Conservation Committee and myself.
Ma'am, I'm so sorry, is that your name, address?
Oh, yeah, Julia Bartunick, two-six-four-five Meadowood Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, three-four-six-five-five.
Okay.
She doesn't need to be sworn for this one.
She doesn't need to be sworn for this one, and the next one. Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I speak on behalf of the Sierra Club Pasco Conservation Committee and myself. Sierra Club has developed principles attempting to guide entities in matters such as this. One, Sierra strongly discourages suburban sprawl as represented by this proposed zoning change. The sprawl fails to maximize place infrastructure. This change will require Pasco County to expand its infrastructure, multiple arenas, including schools, roads, water, sewer, resiliency, fire protection, and even government. Two, suburban sprawl fails to recover the costs associated with expansion. Citizens who derive little benefit from this change in zoning will, at some level, wind up paying for the expansion. Three, moving into what will become urban sprawl creates a scenario where underfunded costs of Project A are attempted to be recovered by Project B. Of course, Project B itself is underfunded, and the process continues in the losing battle with new projects. Four, Sierra Club principle of walkable communities. Walkable communities are designed in such way that any resident is within walking or biking distances of the services and amenities needed on a day-to-day basis. The street plans provide curved cul-de-sacs, no-through streets, and broad sidewalks. All of this focused on residents who live there, having many chargeable EV stations... All of this focused on residents who live there, having many chargeable EV stations, dark skylighting, and solar roofing is optimal. Pasco County is a beautiful county. Sierra Club sponsors neighborhood renewal, an approach that allows Pasco County to maximize current infrastructure. By the same token, Sierra Club supports the principle of infilling, again, maximizing utilization of in-place facilities. Both of these approaches allow Pasco County to maintain green spaces and vibrant places, which support health, both mental and physical. I, myself, I'd like to request another park adjacent to the river, similar to James Gray Preserve. This is out of concerns for flooding issues of Newport Ritchie residents post-development of the zoning change for the Newport Corners' development. I'm also concerned with runoff pollutants from the, into the Plithkaloche River, impacting its estuaries, river beauty, and potential increased tourism. Now, I put both of the numbers on here for P-55 and P-61, so I'll just come back up, and then I'd like to submit them to the record after I share on P-61.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right. The next person signed up, I think it's Lori Jonah Bellvin.
Hi.
Sorry. Your handwriting's hard for me. So, sorry.
Hi. My name is Lori Bellvin. I live at 11110 Pine Tree Lane, Port Ritchie.
Okay. And, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I am just here personally to speak against the development and zoning change. I just wanted to express my concerns for the animals that are not being regarded as. I feel that we have the, I feel that, my concern is for the animals not being cared for, not being put somewhere else. Okay? I'm sorry, this is my first time speaking, so I'm just a little nervous, but we have an eastern indigo snake that is about to become extinct, and things like that aren't being cared for, and that's my concern. Just wanted to bring the attention to that. That's all I have, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have three individuals signed up without a agenda item number, so I don't know if you want to speak to P-55, P-50, or P-61, or both. Barbara Costa? Okay. P-61, for the record, is what she would like to speak to. And then, Dixie Sparks?
I'm not sure if.
Okay. So, for the record, Ms. Sparks also would like to speak on P-61. And then, Margot Robinson?
P-61.
All right. She would also like to speak on P-61. I have a person signed up for P-61, making sure that they wanted to speak to P-61. It is David Robinson, Robbyson? Okay. All right. Very good. Then, we're good with the ones that had signed up for P-55.
Okay. And the applicant?
Anybody else, well, anybody else on P-55? Last call. Closing public hearing on P-55.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clark Hobby. Again, I'll be brief. The, apparently, the Sierra Club representative, I don't think, has seen our plans for the site because virtually everything that they were complaining about is a backbone of our plan of design for the community. It's specifically designed to be a walkable community, and all, all of our streets, almost all of them, except for ones which deadened into wetlands, are all interconnected. It's designed to be a, a place that creates open spaces. It creates two parks, one of which is by the river, and that's really the focal point of the whole project, and we'll talk about that more in the MPUD. This is not suburban sprawl in any manner or form. This site's been within our urban service area and has been referred to the hole in the doughnut in the urban service area for the last 12 years. All of the services that we need to provide to our site are already in place. This is the antithesis of suburban sprawl. This is called urban infill in Pasco County. So, I feel very comfortable with the project we're, we're pursuing, and I'll allude to this a little bit more later. We have not, we, in our preliminary environmental assessments, we did not discover any eastern indigo snakes on the, on the site. That will be further examined as we go through each phase of development, as is required by federal and state law. And then, the last thing I just wanted to point out, I think one of the, the folks is concerned about open space and animals. I'll give you more color on this later, but actually, over 400 of the 700 acres and change south of Decubulus are being preserved as open space. So, there's a great commitment to green spaces and open spaces on the site. With that, I don't think most of those questions were in comments from the other folks, or even germane to the comp plan amendment, so I'd ask that you move approval on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to the applicant? All right. Public comments closed. We're done with presentation?
Motion.
Commissioner Oakley?
I move.
With approval?
Yeah.
Second?
I was waiting on her.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote?
She moves, and I'll second.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starky.
And I will present P-61.
All right. Hello again. Amy Hyler with Long Range Planning. Today, you'll be hearing item RZ-7598, which is the Newport Corners' master plan unit development rezoning. So, as previously shown, this is, this site is located in the Central and Spring Districts of the West Market area, as well as Commissioner District 4. This is your visual showing the aerial where it's north of Plath, south of Decubulus, along the Little Road Corridor. So, the proposal for the rezoning petition is to rezone the existing AC Agricultural District and AR Agricultural Residential District to MPUD master, master plan unit development on approximately 956.3 acres of real property to allow for a mixed-use development of residential, office, retail, and other commercially, or community-scale non-residential uses. The intent of this area is to be developed as a companion downtown to the city of Newport Ritchie through a series of well-connected street networks, trails, and land uses designed to complement and serve the surrounding community. So, I'll go through a little history of Newport Corners. You heard this previously at the BC, at the transmittal hearing and rezoning action. So, as stated, as Clark had mentioned, on August 10th, 2010, the Board of County Commissioners heard and approved the reclassification of the existing residential future land use classifications at that point in time to the Newport Corners' Flu Amendment through the adoption of ordinance number 10-26. The improved entitlements at that time for Newport Corners considered existing densities set to, to, set by the established residential land uses, as well as increase the intensity to allow for a maximum development potential of 3,397 dwelling units and 4.8 million square feet of non-residential uses. So, that was approved in 2010. Here is the visual for the existing land use that was approved at that point in time. And so, in, on December 9th, 2021, the local planning agency held the public hearing on the comp plan amendment and approved the proposal of increasing the density from 3,347 units to 3,400 units and reducing the 4.8 square feet of non-residential to 1.4 million square feet of non-residential uses, as previously noted, or at least, or as previously approved. On January 25th, you had the authorization, and today, we went ahead and heard the adoption for the comp plan amendment. So, on March 17th, we did hold the rezoning petition at the planning commission, and there was a recommended modification at that point in time to allow for the connection or allow for connectivity or inclusion of multi-use path to connect to the Cody River Elementary School along Plath Road. That change has been incorporated into the master plan connectivity plan and conditions for the MPUD, conditions of approval. There's also minor modifications that occurred to the following conditions, as approved by PDD and the applicant. There were a couple variations from the code. As stated, some variations included LDC Section 805.6 for the restrictions of post-development wetlands along, to ensure some, so these were buffering components of the wetlands that were approved. Neighborhood park requirement was reduced. This was as a result of the location of the urban rec center that's going to be proposed alongside the Village, Village, Northeast Village area, as well as 402.5 for the distance of the alcohol waiver for consumption because there are no schools or churches within the vicinity of that regulation. So, the proposed entitlements are set forth in the conditions of approval for the MPUD. As previously stated, there's approximately a total of 3,400 residential units and a maximum of 1.4 million non-residential units. Those are defined as follows. 1,825 single-family units, or entitled as follows. 1,825 single-family, 400 townhomes, 700 multifamily, 475 age-restricted units, and 350,000 square feet of retail, and 1,050,000 square feet of office and target industry. So, as previously stated, this is the subarea map that identifies the village areas for Newport Corners, and I'll go into some detail on what that means. So, this is going to be your connectivity plan. This is also adopted within the conditions of the MPUD. They will be bound to this and will be bound to the location of the roadways, the park requirements, wetlands, uplands, and sidewalks and connectivities. So, the Northeast Village, so the intent of the Northeast Village is to act as a primary location for employment generation with a mixture of residential densities and the establishment of an urban recreational, or possible establishment of an urban recreational center in this location. This is going to be north of Decubulus and east of Little Road. In this area, we have had extensive negotiations with the Office of Economic Development, as well as Parks, Recs, and Natural Resources. So, with Office and Economic Development, the applicant and planning and development came to an agreement for this area to prioritize office and target industry uses, to include, but not limited to professional office, medical office, as well as a 25-acre flex space, which is defined in the conditions of approval for the MPUD. And then, with Parks and Rec, we have been in negotiations with Parks, Rec, and Natural Resources, and the applicant has agreed to preserve 10 upland acres for a period of two years to allow for an urban, for the potential for an urban recreational center. The intent of this urban recreational center is to act, act as a companion to the Magnolia Valley, as well as Mitchell Park, to fulfill the level of service for the regional park in this area. And the neighborhood general is going to primarily be your residential uses. So, the neighborhood general is going to include your residential, single-family detached, single-family attached, alley-loaded, and age-restricted developments or uses within this area. And then, the Village Center is actually going to be more of your downtown core. So, previously, this was of an open space that we converted or, or changed to speak more to the Village Center. So, this is going to be your downtown component for Newport, Newport Corners. So, the Village Center is going to provide for a mixture of retail, office, and residential uses, and these uses are actually only going to be primarily commercial uses, neighborhood serving restaurants, those downtown components. We're also priorities prioritizing vertically-integrated uses in this area, and we've spoke with the applicant and prohibited various uses that may be considered dirty or not, not a companion to the character of the area, i.e., clerical, or not clerical, sorry, RV, electrical mechanic, RV warehousing, and car washes are going to be prohibited in this area. And then, we also have a companion within the connectivity plan that shows the parks and trails and sidewalks and open spaces that are going to be in this area, and then the accompanying master plan delineating the wetlands and the general range of uses locations and access points. And with that, we recommend that the BCC approve the rezoning request, subject to the attached conditions of approval. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay. Time for the applicant?
Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, Clark Hobby again. Had to remember how to advance the clicker. This is the difficult thing in my day. Okay. Here today, very happy to be with you on behalf of a large planning and engineering team and our client, Lennar Homes. And Joel, too, is working with me and represents the seller who's going to retain some of this project. But the big things I want you to know today is that our team has known and has been working on this project for almost two and a half years now, and we're very much cognizant of the importance of this site to West Pasco County and to our neighbors and to the development of West Pasco in general. So, when I think about this site, I always think about the history of our county, and if you go back and you look at the aerials of this area and in West Pasco County, a lot of people don't realize, we did not even have a bridge over Little Road until the early 80s. So, if you lived up in this area where the county government center is, and you had to go see somebody down by 54, you had to drive all the way into downtown Newport Ritchie to do so. And so, if you look at the larger area that we find ourselves in, a lot of the build-out lots that you see there, there was virtually nothing in 1974 in this area, and most of West Pasco, the development occurred in close proximity to 19. Well, why am I saying that? Well, it's because if you go back and you look at your history, the landowner of this property gave the property for Little Road and for the bridge over Little Road to be constructed. And if you read this article from this, I think it's from the St. Pete Times, no, I'm sorry, it's from the Tribune, that basically, the chairman says that we could not have built Little Road and the bridge but for the dedication of the right-of-way for this area. And what happened is, once the bridge was built and Little Road was built through this area, it's responsible, almost single-handedly, for the majority of the growth that we now know on the east side of Newport Ritchie and all of this area. So, because of that, and what the board could see happening even at the adoption of the original comp plan, this area has been planned for RES 3 and RES 6 density since at least 2000. And all of the plan amendments coming forward to the adoption of Newport Corner continue to show RES 3, RES 6, and RES 9 in this area, which indicates that the county knew this was going to be urbanized over time. And moreover, the number of residential units that are in Newport Corners have already existed, going back at least since 2000. So, after the board adopted Newport Corners in 2010, which you all heard, heard about, the board then created our market areas and created the harbors plan for, for the West Market area, and as you all are undoubtedly aware, conducted all kinds of community workshops, and there were all kinds of working teams that worked on this for like a year and a half. And the goals for this site were set out in the harbors plan, and they really boil down to a few things. We wanted to preserve open spaces. We wanted to open up some access to the river and have good trail systems, and we really, more than anything, want to create a sense of place that is something that we can be proud of in this area and not have more of the same stuff we've seen on 54 for the last 25 years. This is strategically important site. Our client is aware of that, and because of that, gave the planners at Clearview Land Design a real free hand in designing the community. So, you've seen the MPUD, and you've heard some discussion about the, I'm going to come back to that. You've heard some discussion about the overall plan, but let me just walk you through just a few things, and I won't belabor it. The central focus of this project is the four corners at Newport Corners. As I said, the previous comp plan already allowed all this residential, and what we need to do is have a really nice downtown area around which we can plan. So, what we've done here is, these corners, which were already appropriately sized when Newport Corners was adopted, they're only 12 and a half acres in size, and they're really only appropriate for neighborhood-scale uses. The planners at, at Clearview Land Design and working with Lennar and with the sellers' representatives, created this beautiful green space area through the, the downtown area, running through here and a big greenway down to the river in a park system and amenity area. They also, and this is, again, some of this stuff is unprecedented for Lennar, never done this, all of these cross-hatched areas. done this, all of these cross-hatched areas you see are all alley-loaded product. The point being, we're trying to create a downtown community feel here, maybe, you know, similar to Bexley, but even more powerful than that area based on the scale we're talking about. And all of these units will be looking over the green space in the downtown area. Moreover, and again, the sellers never agreed to do anything like this before, the seller agreed to move all of the buildings up on the green space, so that the parking's going to be in the rear, and agreed to create with the county, as the site plans come in, standards for building orientation, the facades of the building, architectural signage, landscaping, and parking. Now, do you all, have you ever heard of another time that that's been done in the county? You haven't, because it's never been done before. And the reason why we're doing all this is to show you all, we're committed to the plan you see today and that connectivity plan and creating this sense of place. We're going to continue to work with your planners on the commercial standards, but we have to do this right, and we have to do this together to make sure we fulfill the mission that the board adopted in 2010. You've seen the greenway plan, and I won't belabor these slides, but what we're showing you here, this is what our multi-use paths are going to look like. Some of the larger ones are along the river system, and we've given great thought to the crossings of Little Road, and on Little Road, we're going to have a brick paver system there with pedestrian relief in the middle, so that our pedestrians can safely cross Little Road. Then when we get down to the green space area, we're going to have a series of amphitheater-type feel or open spaces, some of which are going to be more passive in nature. Then there'll be some more active areas, and I'll flip to a slide in a minute, which shows you where we may have some kind of a bike park or skate park and so forth. But the planners at Clearview have been working with a top-notch firm out of Utah on the trail system, I'm sorry, I need to go back, about the plan that we're going to have down by the river and really where our focal area is there. A lot of thought has gone into it, something we can be really proud of. You heard from staff, and you're going to hear from some of our neighbors, that they are concerned about open spaces and what we're doing in that. And I can assure you, the Clearview team put a lot of effort and a lot of thought into this, so that the green spaces throughout the community complement the areas where the wetlands are already located, and the ponds are then located around them as well. So again, just in the area south of Decubulus, we're creating or preserving over 400 acres of open space, and to me, that's really remarkable. I think you've seen the majority of the connectivity plan, and we've gone through most of this stuff before, so I'm not going to belabor this, but I do want to point out just a few other things, because I know you're likely to hear some concerns from our neighbors on these things. Again, when we started this project, before we did the plan amendment, the traffic would have been significantly worse than where we are today. And through a combination of reducing the huge, and I mean mall, regional mall-scale retail on the site, and reducing some of the other non-residential, but still keeping enough to have really good job creation here, we reduced the total number of trips that could have been allowed by over 70%, okay? That's very significant. Moreover, we agreed as to transportation to a series of conditions that will require us to build two roads on the east side that will ultimately be parallel relievers to Little Road. So the people who live on the east side of the road, if they're going north to Decubulus, won't have to go on Little Road. They'll be able to cut through the community and go out over there. Then we created a lockbox system for all the mobility fees that will be created from the site, and I anticipate that number's going to be somewhere between 20 and 25 million. And the way the conditions work is, rather than that money going to some other area of the county, some other area in West Pasco, the funds can only be used by the county for improvements to Little Road, Starkey, or Decubulus. And staff feels very strongly, and they've told me, that they want to see how Ridge Road works once the third and fourth lanes are open and do some further traffic studies to decide where to best spend those funds. So that's, that's the plan on traffic. You heard about the parks. Again, there's a, in addition to what we're doing on our park, there's another 10 acres being reserved for a park that Natural Resources wants, north of Decubulus. You heard about the employment numbers. We're reserving plenty of entitlements, and there's a 25-acre employment site, which is being reserved. Those are both specifically what staff asked us to reserve, and to the seller's credit, they did everything that staff asked of them. Again, preserving huge open spaces and preserving a lot of wetlands, the only wetland impacts that we propose onsite are to some isolated category threes. None of the cat ones are proposed to be impacted. I'm very proud of the work that went into the connectivity plan and the overall design of the development. It's been a two-and-a-half-year process that we've gone through with your staff, and I specifically want to thank Amy Hyler, Terry Petos, David Goldstein, the transportation staff. And I just want to point out, on the transportation side, when we took this project on, there were two big collector roads that were going to go right through the middle of the eastern portion of the project, and we could not have built the downtown that we're going to build with that roadway system. And we had to work for six months with your staff to reach an accommodation, so that the land use principles and the transportation principles could meet together and still create a grid system that will distribute the trips, but then will also allow for a downtown feel that's walkable, bikeable, and so forth. And again, we knew this day was coming two and a half years ago, and my, my question to our client and to our planning team two and a half years ago was, can we and have we done everything that we can do to make sure that the end of this project and the planning that leads up to today, that we've created a special sense of place and a community destination? And to my client's credit and to the seller's credit, I believe we fulfilled that mission today with a lot of work with your staff. So I appreciate your consideration of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions to the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comment, and it's important, as our clerk calls your name, that you give your name, your address, and that you have been sworn. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. All right. The first individual signed up is Laura Jesky.
Thanks for the opportunity to share my concerns. My name is Laura Jesky. I live at 6949 Plath Road, Newport-Ritchie, and I've been sworn. The Newport Corners development has been in the works for years, and I'm sure the property owners, developers, and county planning folks worked very hard to reach this point. But as a resident who will very likely be here for the next few decades, paying for the full impact of their development, I'm terrified of what these folks are leaving in their wake. They will be long gone when the next drought hits. They'll be long gone when their high-density living space turns into a slum. Of course, they're paying impact fees, but those fees don't cover anywhere near the full cost of their high-density developments. I know others speaking today are covering the runoff and flooding concerns and the awful displacement of wildlife. No, there is no safe route for those poor creatures to migrate to starkey wilderness. But those impact fees don't come anywhere near the budgets of all of our first responders, who are now understaffed and under-equipped for the population of Pasco, as it stands today. Obviously, they're in a pretty bad state for a projected spike in population. In the whole planning exercise, no one thought of paying for this need before recommending a project for approval? The commission saying they will discuss the matter at a May 22 budget meeting seems like a little, little too late. I only have three minutes to share my concerns, but I'd like to enter the public record an article from a local newspaper citing a 2020 report from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to you, the Pasco County Commission. It describes the extremely distressful ranking of our Pasco County Sheriff's Department at number 64 out of 67 counties in the state of Florida for the ratio of deputies to residents. That's near the bottom. While I don't have news articles about other first responders' capacities concerns, from firsthand conversations, I know that they are all suffering from the same lack of funding and trained personnel. You, the Pasco County Board of Commissioners, are in a powerful position. You can throttle back the explosive development track we are on, so that the support systems for your current residents catch up, or you can accept the responsibility when people die waiting for basic services to arrive. Can I submit my newspaper article for the public record?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up is Mark Jesky.
And folks, please no clapping as we go forward. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm saying, for the folks in the audience, please no clapping. It was quiet, but out of control, yeah.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Mark Jesky, and I live at 6949 Plath Road, Newport-Ritchie. I wish to make reference to a few important articles that I found related to my speech.
Sir, I'm sorry, sir, I'm so sorry. Pause time. Just on for the record, have you been sworn?
Yes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
And I would like to please request permission to submit into the public record the first identifying page of each article.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May they pose? Thanks.
Thank you. I have an article where County Administrator Dan Biles said that in 2021, the county issued permits totaling nearly $4 billion in approved property value, 56% above 2020 and double 2019. I have an article where Assistant County Administrator Sally Sherman advised that the county had to hire 10 new staff in planning and 14 in building construction administration because of all the development. I have an article where County Property Appraiser Mike Wells states that Pasco County's population could reach almost a million by 2040. That's almost double the current census number of 562,000. I have several articles in which experts have studied the effects of uncontrolled development sprawl. They all conclude that uncontrolled development ends up costing the communities a lot more than it generates in economic growth and tax gain. I reference Florida's statute, section 145.031, which increases the salaries of county commissioners as the population of their county increases. That statute explicitly permits commissioners to voluntarily freeze their salaries, so that they are not influenced by the drive to maximize development. If you have not done so already, I request that each of you consider voluntarily freezing your salaries at the current Pasco County population level, so that increased pay runs no risk of influencing your development decisions. I note that some of you accepted political donations from developers and their consultants. I request that any of you who have received donations from a developer or consultant who will benefit from the Newport Corners project, consider recusing yourself from today's decision-making process. Considering the millions of dollars at stake with this project and the long planning period, it is probably unrealistic to think we can stop this speeding train. But why can't we slow it down? Slow it down a lot. A project of this size should be phased in over a long period of time, especially given the current construction madness in our county. A phased development over 15 years or longer would give the current residents and the wildlife an opportunity to acclimate to the change. Please step back and truly think about what you are doing to this county. It's time to emphasize planning for the quality of life of the current citizens. It's time to put the brakes on development.
Rub it up, Chuck. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Julia Barternak?
Hi again, I was sworn in, and I'm still sworn in. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I speak on behalf of the Sierra Club Pasco Conservation Committee and myself. The Sierra Club has developed principles attempting to guide entities in matters such as this. Sierra strongly discourages suburban sprawl as represented by this proposed zoning change. Sprawl fails to maximize in-place infrastructure. This change will require Pasco County to expand its infrastructure in multiple arenas, including schools, roads, sewers, water, resilience, ceasefire protection, and even government. Two, suburban sprawl fails to recover the costs associated with expansion. Citizens who derive little benefit from this change in zoning will at some level wind up paying for the expansion. Three, moving into what will become urban sprawl creates a scenario where the underfunded costs of Project A are attempted to be recovered by Project B. Of course, Project B itself is underfunded, and this process continues in a losing battle of new projects. Four, Sierra Club's principle of walkable communities. Walkable communities are designed in such a way that any resident is within walking or biking distance of services and amenities needed on a day-to-day basis. Street plans provide for curved cul-de-sacs, no-through streets, and broad sidewalks. All of the focus, all of this focused on residents who live there. Having many chargeable EV stations, dark sky lighting, and solar roofing is optimal. Pasco is a beautiful county. Sierra Club supports neighborhood renewal, an approach that allows Pasco County to maximize current infrastructure. By the same token, Sierra Club supports the principle of infilling and maximizing utilization of in-place facilities. Both of these approaches allow Pasco County to maintain green spaces and vibrant places, which support health, both mental and physical. As myself, I'd like to request another park adjacent to the river on Plath Road, similarly along Plath Road, on the east, on the south side of Plath Road, similar to James E. Gray Preserve. This has added deep concerns for flooding issues of Newport-Ritchie residents post-development of the zoning change for the Newport Corners development. I'm also concerned with the runoff pollutants into the Pithclouche River impacting its estuaries, river beauty, and potential increased tourism. May I please submit this to public record?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May they pose? Okay.
All right. The next individual signed up is David Robison.
My name is David Robison. I live at 5929 East Lake Drive, Newport-Ritchie, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I really salute your power to control and your duty to control the growth of Pasco County. I lived in Orange County, California, and I witnessed a go from a private road to build the new communities to 10 lanes aligned five in both directions, one to go San Diego, 10 more lanes to go to Los Angeles. So you have an awesome power and duty to keep Pasco County and control its growth, and that I really salute you for that. It's a tough job. I have an idea here to keep beautiful Florida for its residents and its tourists. If we could pass a law that says, build only where there are already existing sewer, water, and electric meters, that way, no more land or lives, livelihood, and the habitat of the people and the animals on that land would be destroyed. In other words, if you build on sites that have already been developed, you can build up, and you can build a little bit bigger on that site, and you don't destroy any more land or lives. You still develop, people can still make their money, you can't stop the people from moving to Pasco County, but you can control where they live and how much land is developed and how much land is not developed for the residents that are already here and the tourists. is not developed for the residents that are already here and the tourists. I think that way, everybody wins. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next person signed up, Barbara Costa. Or Costa. Costa, okay.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Barbara Costa. My address is 6017 Broken Arrow Drive in Newport Ritchie, and I have been sworn. I am here to speak in opposition to Newport Corners. The woods that would be gone are adjacent to my house. The woods are the reason that me and my neighbors live there. Osteen Road is where everybody walks. All the neighbors walk on Osteen at night. We all know each other. Many of my neighbors asked me to say that they're not here because they're at work. They can't get off the middle of the day to come down. My concern is for the animals that would be displaced. I live there. I see the gopher tortoises on Osteen Road. I've seen gopher tortoises no bigger than the size of my hand out on that road. There are rosette spoonbills in those ponds, bald eagles fly over. There are so many animals that will be impacted. Animals don't know to walk somewhere else. They don't know to watch for traffic lights. Every time there's development in Pasco County, you see them dead on Little Road. I mean, I know, I lived there. My concern as well, when Debbie stalled over here 10 years ago or so, my backyard flooded. The stormwater goes through my yard. I'm fine with that, we all have to take a little bit of it. But adding all of these new residences, I think, is going to be a disaster. I'm also concerned, I never received a definitive answer on what was going to happen with Osteen Road at the present time at Dead Ends at Night, which is where I live. If that is extended down to Plath, that means our neighborhood won't be a neighborhood anymore. It's going to be a thoroughfare. People are going to use it to cut through from Massachusetts down to Plath. The developers have stated they want to keep traffic off of Little Road. I don't see how they're going to do that unless they're doing just that, using Osteen Road, which would destroy our neighborhood. I also don't think making Little Road four lanes is a good idea. Had I known this was coming, I would not have bought my house here because this definitely affects our quality of life. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
The next person signed up, Dixie Sparks.
My address is 7633 Wimpel Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida. I'm an advocate for the...
And have you been sworn?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm an advocate for the Sandhill Cranes. And I personally have witnessed what's happened in this area. Lennar built in Trinity, and I have videotaped what has happened over there. The wetlands have been filled in. Beautiful wetlands, I mean, beautiful lakes with 100-year-old cypress trees. Sandhill cranes walking around, just a beautiful area, all kinds of wildlife, from aningas, great blue herons, cormorants, we have deer, all kinds of wildlife. These wetlands were just filled in with animals and them. Huge piles of dirt with baby alligators, just displaced, probably their families covered up with dirt. I literally broke down and cried. I've never witnessed anything so painful as to what we are doing to wildlife. I see you have a picture of the Sandhill Crane here. What are we doing for them? They are protected. They're supposed to be protected. You say, okay, we're going to build around the wetland in the development. What happens there? People come by with their dogs, they have their dogs off-leash, dogs run, chase the cranes, cranes can't live there. Cranes are territorial. When you build over in Trinity, that's where they lived for hundreds of years. They still go back there. So when you fill in those wetlands, what happens to all these animals? They either get buried as they're filling them in, or they get chased out on the highway where they have run over by cars. I picked up, I don't know how, I've lost count, how many cranes have been run over. They're foraging on the highway because there's no place to forage, there's no land, okay? We, as a human race, we have a responsibility to the earth. They can come in and develop all this land today, make all this money, and who suffers? We're all going to suffer eventually because wetlands are important for ecological system. Wetlands purify water. Wetlands provide protection from storms. Trees, we get oxygen. We need, when they put in these huge developments, they put up a tree, and they destroy everything that's been there for years. What's happening to our earth? What's happening? I beg you, you're in a position to help the earth, to help the environment. I beg you to look beyond, beyond money and these considerations, and use what we already have. Use areas that are not being developed, that's already here that we could utilize. I have one last thing to say. Only when the last tree has died, and the last river has been poisoned, and the last fish has been caught, will we realize we cannot eat money? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Last person I have signed up is Margot Robison.
Hi, I'm Margot Robison. I live at 5929 East Lake Drive, Newport Ritchie, 34653. And I'm...
Ma'am, have you been sworn?
Pardon?
Have you been sworn?
Yes.
Okay. You may proceed.
I stood up. The, I was very happy to hear that 400 acres is going to be preserved. My concern is that, is it the original trees, or is it the landscaping they bring in from the nursery trees? Because that's a huge difference in the wetlands mitigation, et cetera, et cetera. Because if they can preserve the 400 acres of existing trees and nature there, that would be phenomenal. What I'm seeing happening out at Mitchell doesn't show that at all. They're just bulldozing everything, just boom, everything's gone, filling everything. It just looks like a hellish landscape out there. And we certainly don't want that to happen here. So I understand that these designers and engineers did a lot of work for a long time to get this to be a better development, and I'm sure it's going to be. But it would be so much better if they could preserve the existing trees, set aside areas that the animals are not killed off. And I know the biggest problem is gopher tortoises, because I know it's five grand to relocate a gopher tortoise, so they'd rather bulldoze them and pay the fine. It's cheaper. I don't see that we can afford to lose any more gopher tortoises because they are the mainstay of the environment for the rest of the animals. They dig the burrows for the rest of the animals. So I think it would be very important to preserve those gopher tortoises. I understand there's a spring in there. That would be a biggie, to keep that area as-is, not bring a bunch of bulldozers in there. So I just think that it's very important that this development does a completely different plan of action than the other developments out on 54. Because the ones out on 54 are just rape, 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 everything. I think these guys have probably done a lot of work to try and preserve some goodness here, and I would really like to see that happen. Thank you.
That's all we have signed up.
So we've signed up, and there's no one on WebEx for this?
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Please come forward and just line up one by one. Is there anyone else other than these two that want to speak? And have you two been sworn?
I did stand up for your swearing now, but the clipboard wasn't there to...
That's okay.
I didn't know.
You haven't been sworn in? Okay, all right, let's see where you went afterward. Go ahead, sir. Name and address on your...
Sure. My name is Lance Levy, over here at 7110 Old Homestead Road, exactly bordering the Northeast Village. Okay, it's a little dirt road there.
And you have been sworn, correct?
I did stand up for your swearing.
Thank you, I have to have it on the record. Thank you.
Okay. So it's not so much of a statement, I've been trying to find out for a while now. It's more of a question. I'll state it if anybody can answer. I know there's people here that definitely should know the answers.
Ask the question, the applicant will address it.
Okay. But on the Northeast Village, I mean, it runs between Little Road and it ends at Old Homestead, which is a dirt road, okay? It comes up like yay. That's a big wetland area up there, hills, property, and there's about five of us here. I've got an autistic child. I specifically moved there because there's like zero traffic, there's a few vehicles every day. And that road, I've been told, and I've been told contradictory, that that's going to be all paved, we're going to have to have a paved road in there now, they're going to put sewers in, we're going to have to pay for all that stuff. I'm concerned about traffic on that road. I mean, if they're going to make that a thoroughfare, which I don't really know how they could, but they could bring it in and use that as a backside to your industrial complex or whatever you're going to put in there, that's really what I like to know, is is that road going to be touched at all? Are they just going to leave that as a buffer on that bordering property?
We'll find the answer.
Okay. So that's really what I'm looking for, guys. I mean, I'm not naive, I don't expect to change all this. It looks like people have put a lot of work in, hopefully they'll do a good job for us. So.
Thank you. All right, this will be the last speaker, and we're going to swear you in.
Okay. Could you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, if you could state your name and address for the record, and then you can begin.
Yeah. My name is Miranda. I live on 6436 Wooden Street. I live in the neighborhood right next to the main woodline. My fear is if you open up to Osteen, even if they are promising to pave it under their own funds, that it's going to cause a lot of traffic, especially with the multi-use trails. We're going to have a lot of people with golf carts cutting through to get down to the actual downtown of Newport Ritchie, and it's not going to be safe. It's not going to be safe for my kids. I have two toddlers. I take them for bike rides in the tow behind, and I can't do that anymore once they open that up. I will not feel comfortable with the amount of traffic that will fly through, especially down Osteen. People already fly down Osteen, and now we're going to add 34 more hundred homes in that vicinity. Little Road already gets backed up with traffic. Even expanding more lanes, are you going to expand the bridge? Or is it going to funnel? We're going to add more lights, it's going to cause more backup. There's plenty of areas in Pasco that are available for lease. I brought them if I can submit them. And just in West Pasco, there's 294 as of the 4th of this month available for lease. There's plenty of areas to rebuild or lease out for more businesses. I know last time I couldn't be here because my son had surgery, and they notated that Copper Springs was a failure of a project in the end result, and Lennar Homes built that. But we're going to entrust them to do this project with all this planning, but how are we going to know that it's not going to end up being another failure of this area with nothing to really show for it? I just would hope that in the end, I'm sure it's going to be approved either way, that we just don't open up Osteen for the safety of the families that already live there. It's a very quiet neighborhood, a lot of nature. I'm lucky enough to have a large backyard and get to experience some nature with my kids, and I just know that a lot of it might migrate away. And my kids will never know without going, paying to go to a park, go to the zoo, or the aquarium, or have to drive to a state park in another area just for them to know what nature is. That's it. If I can notate, if I can submit these.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. And with no one else in the public here, is there anyone on WebEx?
No one's on WebEx.
So we're going to officially close public comment. Back to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman Clark-Hobby again. We had a few questions about Osteen Road, and I'll try to answer those. Actually, could we go back to a slide? Yeah, there we go. All right. Let me explain what's going on with Osteen Road. If I can get this, come on. There we go. So some of the residents were asking about this section right here. This is unlikely to ever be built. This is unlikely to ever be built. The section north of Vision Road U, which winds through here, we are only going to have, we will resurface this when we make a connection to it, but it's unlikely to occur real soon because of the phasing plan, number one. Number two, this is the only area that's intended to be gated because this is intended to be an active adult area. So we don't anticipate our residents really using Osteen very much, and there'll be gates over here, and they'll be accessing their primary roadway network down through here and into Newport Corners, into the Corners themselves. So just wanted to clarify that as to Osteen. Now, as the one gentleman spoke who lives over in this area, we do not propose any access over to this area at all. Our roadway system doesn't rely on that anyway. The access to the Northeast Village is primarily through here. There may be one other connection over in this area that's a right-in, right-out, but this is where the access points will be. And for that very reason, we actually got a letter of no objection, and the man spoke at the Planning Commission hearing from the Lexington Oaks Townhomes HOA here. So again, we are not proposing any access on this site at all. A lot of the testimony that you heard was people simply worried about wildlife, and there are things to be appreciated for sure. That's going to happen when you have a project that's the last hole in the doughnut. But as I think everyone here is aware, this site was an orange grove site for many, many years, and it would still be in orange grove right now. It was in a heavily disturbed orange grove state, and it still would be but for the freezes in the 80s. And so the landowner planted pines there for two reasons. One, to maintain the greenbelt, and then the second thing is because they want to make money selling the pines. So whether or not this project ever occurs or not, those pines are going to be harvested, and people simply cannot rely on your neighbor having planted pines, which again are planted to be harvested for a production crop for cash, as creating some kind of urban panacea. That's not reality, and that's not what this site ever has been. Again, it was a working grove site for many, many years. As you all know, we have to follow the comp plan. And the comp plan that we're dealing with today, the majority of the policies were put into place over 12 years ago. What we're doing today is fulfilling the promise, the promise that you made as a board to West Pasco County, that instead of just having 3,400 homes, we create together a real sense of place, and we do it with a quality mixed-use development that promotes walkability, open access to parks and trails in the area, which are so desperately needed in West Pasco County. And together, we are fulfilling the promise that was made to the public in all the workshops. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but the other questions that I hear are all either concerning issues like sprawl that simply don't apply, or are concerns about where animals will go. And I simply would say, this has been a heavily disturbed site for many years, but there are 18,000 acres of nearby preserved areas in the Serenova Preserve and Starkey. This site has never been on the Natural Resources list for preservation. It's always been planned for development, and since 2010, it's been planned specifically for this form of development. So the board is in a position where it should be proud of where we are today, and we're fulfilling the mission. So with that, I'd ask for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
One of the ladies mentioned the wetland preservation.
Right.
It looks like in the southern part and on the borders of, all around the lower part of the property, you have preserved that without disturbing it.
That's right.
You're not going to disturb the flower over there and replant.
That's right. None of those Class 1 wetlands are being proposed to be disturbed at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I do have a few questions.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Just to confirm, you have 400 acres that will be untouched for preserve, open spaces. The 10 acres on the northeast corner, that's going to go for parks and rec and natural resources?
That's correct. We will have 400 acres of open spaces, I think the correct way of saying it, and there's We will have 400 acres of open spaces, I think the correct way of saying it, and there's 10 acres for a park and rec site on the north side, and there's a 25-acre employment site as well being reserved.
Okay. I think Mr. Jesky had quite asked about a timeframe, and during the Planning Commission, you said this project would take until 2035?
Well, it was interesting. One of the neighbors, and I think it might have been Mr. Jesky, said that this ought to be phased in. We couldn't agree more. Our build-out date is 13 years, which is almost the 15 years you said it should be built out over.
So it's not going to happen overnight?
That's correct.
And then any of the flooding concerns, they would, you'd have to go through SWIFT MUD to make sure there's no runoff on the property?
We have to go through the county and SWIFT MUD, and to the extent it's applicable for a federally regulated wetland, we'd have to go through DEP.
And then as for the concern of traffic, someone had mentioned, I know we're not, you're not planning on connecting Osteen, and you were talking about having, having interconnectivity for the east of Little Road, but not for the west side of Little Road for Osteen?
Right. Again, I'll just go over this one more time. Again, we are building this east-west Vision Road, and we will have a connection ultimately through this, you know, street section that goes through our neighborhood that will eventually go down to Plath. But Osteen is not proposed to come down as a collector road straight through here. We're going to preserve the right-of-way, and that's it. And again, the only connections we're pursuing up from this area are from a gated, active adult, i.e. senior community, so we don't anticipate a lot of traffic on Osteen.
On the bottom left of that circle, where Osteen goes down to where the black dotted line is, that is not going to connect, correct?
Down from Plath up, it will not, we, we are not building the section from Vision Road U, which is this road here, down to Plath.
Okay. So right...
This section already exists up here.
But it's not going to connect to the blue dotted line going?
It will ultimately connect to that. We have to, pursuant to the county's rules, because it's a vision road. It will have a connection. It's unlikely, if you think about the traffic pattern, if people are going north, they're unlikely to peel off to go up Osteen, as the commissioner, the resident commissioner is aware. This has now, this has what they call it a pork chop, and you can only turn right out of here, should there be no reason for anyone to go, being, going northbound to cut through here, to come back to only be able to go east.
Okay. And then the last one was, you said there's going to be $20 to $25 million for mobility fees that are going to be put aside strictly for this area? So traffic should not be a concern in the future in this area?
That's right. We believe that the county is in the best position, once the lanes three and four of Ridge Road open up, to determine whether Little Road should be improved, whether Decubulus and, and for the board's benefit, you already have fund, it's supposed to be, starting this year, the four-laning of Decubulus from this intersection to Starkey. The questions will be, and the board needs to determine in the days to come, once lanes three and four open on Ridge, how much traffic is being diverted, and where's the best use of the money being spent? Is it at the intersection of Starkey and Decubulus? Is it on Starkey by four-laning it? Or should we add lanes five and six to Little? And the board, we believe, is in the best position to do that, and your staff believes that as well.
And my last comment, question would be pertaining to the special needs child, is you'll be working with them to make sure there's a good buffer for that area?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any?
Thank you. And the questions for staff?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion. We have a motion.
I was getting a motion.
Second. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. And that is the last of the public hearings. We are adjourned. Thank you. Oh, no? Hold on, we're not adjourned.
If I had passed out this, this letter for Senate Bill 620, if the board wishes to authorize the chair to sign it?
Oh, submit.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Jeff, put your mic on. I guess so.
Yeah, they're kind of low.